Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to public laws 1975. Said notice was advertised in the Lacey Beacon and was posted on a bulletin board showing the time and place of the meeting. I'm going to ask our Cub Scouts to lead us in the salute to flag. Go ahead, fellas.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What's that?
Yeah. Ask what you want to read. Is that number two?
Proclamation for Eagle Scout William Rapsis. William. Short coming up. Whereas the rank of Eagle Scout is one of the highest honors a member of the Boy Scouts of America can receive, and whereas only 4% of all Boy Scouts receive this honor, and whereas in order for William Robert Rapsis to receive this rank, he worked to create seven benches for Mill Pond Elementary School, which were placed in the courtyards to provide a safe outdoor learning environment for students and staff to enjoy, and whereas William Robert Rapsis received donations as well as guidance from the scouts and leaders of the Boy Scout Troop 56, 84 lumber, the teachers at Mill Pond School, Mr. Doherty, and his family and friends, and whereas William Robert Rapsis, his scouts and leaders donated approximately 203 hours to complete the project, and whereas his efforts have been cited by the President of the United States, the Governor of New Jersey, the State Senate, the General Assembly, and the Ocean County Board of Chosen Freeholders, and whereas the Mayor and Township Committee wished to commend and congratulate William Robert Rapsis on receiving this high honor, and whereas the Mayor and Township Committee would like this accomplishment and dedication of this young individual to be an example for all those involved in scouting and thank him for a project well done. Now therefore I, Stephen Kennas, Mayor of the Township Lacey, on behalf of myself and the Township Committee, honored William Robert Rapsis for his outstanding accomplishments and encourage other scouts to follow his example. Congratulations.
Perfect.
John, get one with this staff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir, I'd just like to congratulate you. I hope that as you grow older, you enter onto a college campus and spread some of the values that you've learned here in scouting to some of the colleges and universities around the country, because God knows they could use it. And I hope that you do that. You're a real leader. I think you're going to have a fine future. You should be commended. You're part of the 4% who made it, and I think the young men sitting next to you have somebody to emulate now. And in this town, in the few years that I've been fortunate enough to be up here, selected by the people, we've had many Eagle Scouts. So with the mentorship in this town, our department heads, the programs, the teachers, it's heartfelt. I wish you nothing but the best. You deserve all the good things. Best of luck to you.
Thank you very much. Tim?
William, as I'm a father of an Eagle Scout, so I know the trials and tribulations you've gone through. It's not easy. It's not easy. You've got to go out and ask people for donations, and you've got to put it together, and you've got to go up to counseling, it's got to be approved, and everything else like that. And I will tell you this, that my son went through it, and there were times when he wanted to walk away, and I'm sure you had those times, he wanted to walk away, but he's so glad he stuck with it for a couple of reasons. One, he's in the military and got an extra stripe right off the bat for having that, okay? Two, he gets a little bit more money on that. And now that he's sending out resumes to figure out what he's going to do after he leaves the military, everyone's calling him, because a lot of it's because he's an Eagle Scout. So this is going to open doors for you that you don't even know is going to open yet. So I congratulate you.
Thank you very much. Nick?
William, I'd like to congratulate you as a Township Committee man, and also as a resident of Lacey Township for everything you do, and your leadership will go on from here. And just congratulations to your family also. Congratulations. Thank you.
Me also, I'd like to congratulate you. I've known you and your family for quite a few years, and I know the dedication you have to scouting as well as your mom and dad and the entire family. What you accomplished here is certainly a great thing for yourself, as Mr. McDonald said, it's really going to a lot be in the future. I know your mom and dad are very proud. I was at that ceremony, the last Eagle Scout ceremony, you know, sitting next to your mom and dad in the back, and you know, it's truly, this is a nice honor tonight, but the overall ceremony itself is truly something that a lot of people don't realize how involved it is, and the commitment you made over the years. So I apologize, I won't be able to attend your ceremony, because my first grandchild's being baptized that weekend, so we're out of luck. But Mr. Curatolo's going to be attending for us, so that we do have somebody here to honor you that day as well as to what we're doing here tonight. Congratulations to you, mom and dad, and the entire family. So best of luck to you.
Again, William, on behalf of Township Committee, congratulations. There's a lot of hard work and determination, and it couldn't have worked out better that the Boy Scouts are here earning their citizenship badge, so congratulations. You guys are free to leave if you want, the Boy Scouts. I know the parents were asking before, a good time to leave, unless you want to stay through the caucus, another 15 minutes.
Okay.
Proclamation for National Library Week.
Okay. Our librarian wasn't able to attend tonight, she had a family emergency, but we're going to present her with this proclamation. And whereas libraries are not just about what we have for people, but what we do for, do and do with people. Whereas libraries have long served as trusted and treasured institutions, and library workers and librarians fuel efforts to better their communities, campuses, and schools. Whereas libraries are evolving in order to serve their communities and to continue to fulfill their role in leveling the playing field for all who seek information and access to technologies. Whereas libraries and librarians open up a world of possibilities through innovative programming, maker spaces, job-seeking resources, and the power of reading. Whereas libraries and librarians are looking beyond their traditional roles in providing more opportunities for community engagement and deliver new services that connect closely with patrons' needs. Whereas libraries support democracy and effort and affect social change through their commitment to provide equitable access to information for all library users regardless of their race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socioeconomic status. Whereas libraries, librarians, library workers, and supporters across America are celebrating National Library Week. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Stephen Kennas, Mayor of the Township of Lacey, proclaim the week of April 10th through the 16th to be National Library Week. We encourage all residents to visit the library this week and explore what new at your library, what's new at your library, and engage with your librarian, because you're, because of you libraries transform lives. So we will present this to Ms. Voico at a later date.
Thanks, Veronica. Item four, summer recreation programs. Jim Wyland.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. I do want to congratulate William Rapsis. We're very lucky to have him as part of our summer recreation staff, so he's a fine young man, and his parents should be very proud of all of the accomplishments. Well, I'm here tonight to present a little bit about our summer programs. I want to start off by thanking everybody for having me. You know, it's been great being part of Lacey Township, growing up in town, and being now part of the fabric, the community that helped shape the programs that we offer to the community. But I really want to thank the support I've been able to receive from our committee over the years, and it's really been nice to be able to work alongside many of you and have the relationship where we can bounce ideas back and forth. So, you know, I really appreciate that, and you know, with that, I'd like to, you know, talk about how special it is to be in recreation, especially this year. You know, this year we are celebrating a huge milestone in town. This is our 50th summer that our Beach Patrol has been in operation. So for 50 summers, people have been able to enjoy having lifeguards at our lakes and beaches, and that's a special time in recreation for us. So, you know, we're going to start off with our beaches. You know, we have our lifeguard staff that are being fine tuned right now, and we should be ready to go and have our proposals together, but we're going to be opening our beaches again this summer. Bamber Lake, Lake Barnegat, and Cedar Creek Beach will be our beaches of operation. Our hours are going to be 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Our beach badges will again be our $5 price per badge. And I'll talk a little bit about the value of our beach badge. A family of four can buy badges for $20, and they're good for the whole summer, come time and time again. After the kids eat lunch, bring them down to the lake, let it burn off some energy, you know, all of that is great, and that's what we want people to do, to use our facilities. Compared to a day at the beach, if you travel over to one of the oceans, if you want to sit in traffic and do that, you're more than welcome to do that, but you're probably going to spend upwards of $50 or $60 for the one day, and that's just going to cover parking and admission to the beach. So, you know, I know people get, you know, interested and they get involved in our summer, but I just want to show that the value that we're able to offer, you know, a $20 day versus, a $20 season versus a $50 or $60 day. So it's tremendous value. We really want people to come out and take advantage. But we really couldn't talk about beaches without talking about the things that are really so important, and that's being able to provide kids swim lessons. You know, we feel that all kids should be able to learn how to swim, especially in the area that we live, with our beaches and our lakes and being so close to Barnegat Bay. Swimming is essential, and we have our swim lesson program that's every Tuesday at the lake with our lifeguard staff, and those are offered for $20 for the whole session. You know, so we have that going on, and you have a couple different times to choose from, a 10:15 lesson, 11:30, and a 12:45 lesson as well. So, you know, whatever time works best for you in your schedule, you can come down, register for that. And as the kids get older and they start to become very proficient swimmers, we also have a junior lifeguard program where we start training our youngsters and essentially give them a three-year job interview. So we have a chance to have these kids from 12 to 15, and we really get a sense of who our strong candidates are when they then turn to 16 and want to be hired. So it's a great way, it's a great feeder program for our lifeguarding staff. So we have a chance to train them for three years if they're interested, and then, you know, if they're good and they're quality candidates, we can then go ahead and hire them when they're 16 to be part of our staff. You know, so that is, that's, you know, that's something that we are, you know, getting ready to start. Now our badges go on sale May 1st. $5 per badge will be available in the Recreation Department office, and our hours are Monday through Friday, 8:30 to 4:30, and badges will be there. On Saturdays, we do open up, in June and July, we open up on Saturdays to make it convenient for anyone who can't get to us during the business hours during the week. So we will have our badges on sale Saturdays through June and July from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. We really can't talk about the beaches without talking about some of our special events, and our first big event that I want to talk about is our Opening Day Beach Party. That should be June 18th, and it's a special day because it's our 50th summer, or celebrating our 50th summer of operation. So that day will mark our 50th year that we've opened our doors and had our lifeguards out on those lakes. And it's going to be a nice day out. It's completely free to the public. We use it as a way to bring people back to the beaches. Come back. If you haven't been in a while, come see the lakes. The improvements that have been made at the lakes are tremendous, and Lake Barnegat is such a great place to be for families. You know, so that's going to be Saturday, June 18th. We want to make sure everyone has an opportunity to come. There'll be some entertainment, there'll be some things going on throughout the day, canoeing, kayaking, pedal boats, different things that we have through some of the groups that work with us on a regular basis. So that'll be, that'll be available. Talk a little bit about our special events. We have an important one coming up quickly. May 13th is a Friday evening, and this event is going to be unique. It's going to be our first one that we've done. I had a few parents from Mill Pond School come to my office a few weeks ago and said they, the kids at Mill Pond don't have a school dance, so they want to do an outdoor dance. And what better environment to do it than on the beach at Deerhead Beach? You know, so we're going to do a Hawaiian luau on Friday, May 13th, for the kids. Strictly open to Mill Pond students only. This is going to be their special day, and it should be a lot of fun, so we're really excited about that. All our students at Mill Pond, the flyer will be going home probably early next week. It's just finished getting printed, and it'll be home in your backpack shortly, so be on the lookout for that. And, you know, so we want to make sure that all of our students have a chance to come out and be part of that, so that's going to be a great event. Municipal Alliance is a big supporter of that. They're helping provide the funding that we need to do that, and, you know, we couldn't do a lot of the things without their help and their volunteer staff that they bring. So that's going to be a great event for the kids. And then on June 11th, as you guys may or may not already know, the Hooked on Fishing, Not on Drugs Fishing Derby is, you know, starting to get scheduled, and that is something that is going to be a new event for us, too. You know, so we're happy to work with the Lacey Township Fishing Club from the high school as well as Municipal Alliance to help, you know, get that underway, but that's scheduled for June 11th, and it's going to be 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon, and a lot of information will be going out in the coming weeks, so be on the lookout for that as well. The, you know, of course we have, you know, our fireworks and our traditional events as well as Lacey Day, and this year at Lacey Day, we're bringing in a professional magician slash comedian, Mark Worst, and it's kind of an odd name choice for an entertainer, so hopefully he is not the worst, but we should have a lot of fun. He's going to do some strolling magic, he's going to be out there telling, you know, have a family comedy show, so it should be a lot of fun, and that's going to be something that we're looking forward to as well, in addition to the 5K race that we have at the end of August, and, you know, all the other programs. But I don't want to talk too much about summer without going into summer camp. You know, we've really worked hard to build the program back up. It's, it's about 450 members strong now. We've got, you know, last year that we had to tip the market 470 for our kids enrolling in camp, but we have three sites that we utilize, you know, Plune Park, Puffy Wallace Park, and Hebrew Park. And the camp is a traditional summer camp program. It's 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. The kids come, there's lots of activities going on. Ryan's been working extremely hard in my office, Ryan Horn, our camp supervisor, and he's put together a great season of camp activities, from trips to special events to different things that were going on throughout the camp for the trip, or throughout the camp for the kids. And one of the unique things this year that we're able to do, we did have people come to us last year and talk about, you know, how can we better serve our working parents? And, you know, we bounced some ideas around, and I think this year we're really proud to announce that we're going to be having a before-care option for summer camp. It's going to take place at the middle school, and we've already worked out the details with the principal at the middle school, and we're going to be having parents arrive, they can sign in as early as 7:45 to 8:45, and then we will bus the kids from the middle school to the camp designated site, whether they pick Plune, Puffy Wallace, or
Hebrew.
Or Hebrew Park. Thank you. That will be a service that will require an additional cost, and that cost will be $125 in addition to the camp fee of $100. So it is, it is an additional fee, but we feel that for the, for the parents who need the service, it's essential, and that we hope that we, you know, you know, do this pilot program, that we can try not to give surveys at the end to see how it worked, and if we need to adjust and make changes, we'll, we'll certainly, you know, take a look at that. You know, so that's, that's an exciting change, you know, that we've had, or an addition that we've had for camp. You know, one of the things that I want to talk about was the fee structure for camp this year. We are keeping the fee at $100 for our summer camp. We do urge all families to register as early as you can for summer camp. Registration will be able to start as early as, I think the Monday is May 16th. We want people to register as early as they can, because if you wait too long, it puts a much larger strain on our department in terms of getting the resources that we need to properly serve our children. So one of the things that we have instituted this year is the fee is a sliding scale, and if you register after June 23rd, the fee will go to 150. So we want to make sure that we can still serve our community in the most efficiently possible, and getting people early to our registration, to our office for registration is really the best way to do that. So that's how we want, we want to make sure that people are aware of that. It's all listed in our summer brochure. As soon as you're ready, and, you know, March, May 16th, you'll have six weeks to register at the $100 price point, and I think that's a lot of time. We'll be able to make sure we get everybody through those doors as possible. You know, so that's, you know, that's in, you know, a very, you know, inexpensive price angle. We kind of chart the different prices throughout the county, and we are probably the, if we're not the lowest, we are tied for the lowest camp in all of the county, if not the lowest. So it's, it's a great value. It's seven weeks, $100. You know, the only additional fee there is, is if you decide to go on trips, which you don't have to. We have camps still at our sites those days. You know, so it's really important, we want the kids to have an opportunity to socialize and have fun in the summer, you know, much the way I had an opportunity to when I was a kid, you know, many, 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 many years ago now. So, and, you know, in addition to our summer camp, and I'm sorry if I'm being too long here, I tend to talk fast and talk too much, but we have a lot of specialty that are programs that are more curriculum-driven. We do have a theater camp this summer, it's going to be one week long, and the, the topic of the theater camp is going to be the book, based on the book, The Day the Crayons Quit. You know, so our theater instructor is working on the curriculum now, but we have that scheduled, that's going to be the third week of August. Right after our summer camp ends, you'll have an opportunity, if parents need a, another place to send the kids for another week, we'll be in the Recreation Building having theater camp, you know, so that should be exciting. In addition to theater camp, we have art camp, tennis camp, we're going to be working on a running camp, actually a running club that's going to continue throughout most of the summer as we prep for our 5K. But we also have a golf camp, which is going to be new this year. We've been working with a facility in South Thompson called Upton Park Golf Center. They host indoor lessons. They're going to do four days of indoor lessons and then take the kids out to the Cedar Creek Golf Course for their final day of the camp. So should be a lot of fun, and if anyone's interested in the sport of golf, it's a great way to, you know, to get involved in the sport without having to commit to buying all the clubs and, you know, spending lots of money for private instruction. So it's a great service that we're able to offer to the community, we're really excited about it. We really can't talk too much about sports without talking a little bit about some of the, the new things that we're doing in recreation this year. We want to make sure that we're serving all members of the community, so we really put together a list of sports that we think we can reach our youth as well as our adults. So, you know, we're going to be working with the tennis club, so people will have the opportunity to register in our office. They'll, you know, sign up with us. We'll give everyone who's in that age bracket names, phone numbers, and emails of the group, and each week you'll be challenged to play somebody in that group, and we'll coordinate, you know, the names and the list, and then you just, you know, figure out who you're playing that week. Coordinate a time that works both, best for both people, because it's not going to always be, you know, perfect, you know, if people have different things going on in their life. So they'll coordinate those times, dates, and once they're finished playing, they'll report the scores back to the Recreation Department, and we'll keep track, we'll keep standings, and at the end we'll, you know, we'll have an opportunity to wrap it up and have people, you know, a finals program and play those games, hopefully on Lacey Day, if all goes well with weather and we get everything in time. We'll also be doing the pickleball program very similarly. Beach volleyball, we have beautiful courts in town. You know, so that's, that's an opportunity for people to come out and play. We've had beach volleyball last year on Tuesday nights with our, our, our high school teens and a couple of, a couple of older, you know, older groups that wanted to play, but this year we're going to formalize that and do a very similar program where we have a youth and then also have, you know, some adult teams that want to, you know, sign up, and we'll do a very similar program where we'll, we'll get them in touch with each other and they can coordinate times where they can play and then report their scores back. As well as a three-on-three basketball program that we're working on, putting together for our juniors, which will be our middle school students and younger, a teen program for our high school students, our 18 to 30, and a master's division. So, you know, so there's some, some new things on the horizon, and all of those, you know, things will be available in the Recreation Office. The summer brochure is just completed, it's going to go out to our printer, and it should be ready for distribution probably the first week in May. It usually takes about 10 to 14 days to get back from, from our printer, so, you know, we'll be getting that, so you guys should be looking for that in the backpacks at school right around the first week in May, all around town at the same time, and we're really excited. It should be a great summer in recreation. I thank you guys for preparing with me as I
Thanks a lot, Jim. We know this is your busy time here, it sounds like you've got a lot of your We have one add-on.
The Cub Scout PAC 156 is looking to have a fishing tournament on May 6th at the Mill Pond. Obviously they'd like to block off Parker Avenue there between Mill and Lakeside and utilize that lake for two hours from 5:00 to 7:00 on the 6th, so I just need permission for that.
Move it.
Thank you.
Ballot favor?
Yes.
We're going to change the structure tonight. We have an interview to do in the executive section, executive session, so we're going to go right into our township meeting.
Why don't we let these young men go first?
Now's the time. Parents.
Speak out.
We ask for a motion to adjourn the caucus meeting.
A motion to adjourn the caucus?
Motion to adjourn the caucus meeting.
Second. Ball in favor?
Yep.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to the public laws of 1975. Said notice was advertised in the Asbury Park Press and the Lacey Beacon and was posted on a bulletin board showing the time and place of the meeting. Will everyone rise and salute the flag?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one, first reading of ordinance 2016-09 authorizing the acquisition of Block 1162, lots 1 through 4, and Block 1197, lots 36, 37, and 41 through 50.
In order to the Township of Lacey County, Bush State, New Jersey, authorizing the acquisition of Block 1162, lots 1 through 4, and Block 1197, lots 36, 37, 41 through 50, from Louis M. Clayton and Mary S. Clayton in accordance with NJSA 48,12-5A1. These are property donations given back to the township.
Move it. Second.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance 2016-07 authorizing the establishment of a cap bank.
In order to the Township of Lacey County, Bush State, New Jersey, authorizing to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank in accordance with NJSA 48,4-45.14.
Being the second reading, I'll open it up to the public. Does the public have any questions or comments?
On this ordinance.
On this ordinance.
Seeing no
Linda?
You have to come up. Come on, Nick, got to come up.
Nick Spalchro, 25, Dunbury Drive, Fort River. Question is, what is a cap bank?
The state will set a cost of living increase annually, and when they set that, you can utilize this mechanism to, just use for future years in case you have to go over the allowed 2% cap. So they set the rate, and you can go up to 3.5%. We are within caps, we don't usually have to utilize it, but it is for like a safety net if you have to use it in the next two future years. But if you don't pass it, you can't use it, so we just pass it, it's just an annual part of the budget.
Just so, anyone that doesn't know, this is Linda, our CFO and Lacey Township, Linda Cavall.
Any other questions?
On this ordinance.
On this ordinance.
Make a motion if you close the floor.
Move it.
Ball in favor?
Aye. Make a motion, we pass it.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance 2016-08 amending Chapter 261, parks so as to establish fees.
In order to the Township of Lacey County, Bush State, New Jersey, amending and supplementing Chapter 261 of the Township Code of the Township of Lacey entitled Parks. This is, Mr. Wyland had highlighted just this evening, this is with regards to summer recreation program and the sliding scale with regards to the late registration and the $150 late registration fee.
Being the second reading, I'll open it up to the public. Does the public have any questions or comments regarding this ordinance?
Seeing none, make a motion, we close the floor.
Second.
Second.
Ball in favor?
Aye.
Motion on the ordinance?
Move it.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes. Resolution two thousand sixteen one thirteen authorizing the township to assume the responsibility of conducting the annual budget examination.
Resolution to township of Lacy County, Volusia State of New Jersey, authorizing the township of Lacy to assume the responsibility of conducting the annual budget examination. The state allows municipalities every three years to do a self-examination, well, I should say, yeah, every three years to do a self-examination of their budget, and we qualify this year to do, do such, and we have to pass a resolution authorizing same.
Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes. Public hearing on the two thousand sixteen municipal budget?
Well, I'll do first is I'll read what our general appropriations are for municipal purposes, is twenty-eight million, five hundred and ninety-six thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars, re- reserved from collected taxes in the amount of nine hundred and fifteen thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars. General, total general appropriations is in the amount of twenty-nine million, five hundred and twelve dollars and two hundred and ninety cents, I mean, twenty-nine million, five hundred and twelve thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars, less the anticipated revenues in the amount of sixteen million, two hundred and ninety-four thousand. The amount to be raised for taxes for the support of this municipal budget is thirteen million, two hundred and eighteen thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars. And you can open the floor, anybody have comments?
Open it up to the public, does the public have any questions or comments?
Seeing none, I'll make a motion to close the floor?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. I make a motion.
I can read it, I can, so the resolution, resolution of township of Lacy County, Volusia State of New Jersey, authorizing the adoption of the local municipal budget for the township of Lacy for the fiscal year twenty sixteen.
Move it.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes. Item eight, resolution two thousand sixteen one sixteen awarding a contract to beacon construction for the bulkhead replacement project.
Resolution to township of Lacy County, Volusia State of New Jersey, awarding a contract for the bulkhead replacement project at various locations to beacon construction of New Jersey. This, um, is for three street end bulkheads, it's Waikiki, Oahu, and Kilo Bay Drive, um, to replace those bulkheads. We initially estimated sixty-five thousand dollar cost, the bid came in at thirty-nine thousand, one hundred and ninety-one dollars, so it was substantially under our estimate, which is a very good thing, and this gentleman has performed prior projects in the town, and we're very happy with his service.
Move it.
Second. Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes. Item nine, resolution two thousand sixteen one seventeen awarding a contract to Garden State Highway Products.
Resolution to township of Lacy County, Volusia State of New Jersey, awarding a, a contract for the purchase of regulatory signs to Garden State Highway Products Incorporated. This is through the Cat, Stafford Township Co-op, there's a, um, about thirty, um, members in this co-op, and they go out to bid, um, in bulk for large items. Obviously, these are the regulatory signs that are posted throughout the community on our streets and roads.
Motion?
Second. Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes. Resolution two thousand sixteen one eighteen authorizing the execution of a contract for the CWA.
Resolution to township of Lacy County, Volusia State of New Jersey, authorizing the execution of a contract with the Communication Workers of America. Motion?
Motion.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes. Resolution two thousand sixteen one eighteen authorizing the execution of a contract for the CWA.
Resolution to township of Lacy County, Volusia State of New Jersey, authorizing the execution of a contract with the Communication Workers of America. Motion?
Motion.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Abstained.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes. Resolution two thousand sixteen one nineteen authorizing the execution of an amendment to the contract for COA representation.
Resolution to township of Lacy County, Volusia State of New Jersey, authorizing the contribution of an additional two thousand dollars for the municipal shared defense agreement. This is with regards to the, um, defense that we have going on now between the, um, COA, number of COA units that we're required to have, uh, versus what the state says we are supposed to have, and we have hired a, um, a firm to help us out with, with, uh, I believe there's about a hundred other municipalities that are joined in on this group as well, so we have to add another two thousand dollars to the fund.
Move it.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes. Resolution two thousand sixteen one twenty, authorizing the award of a contract for community energy aggregation program.
Resolution to township of Lacy County, Volusia State of New Jersey, authorizing lead agency of Stafford Township Energy Aggregation Cooperative Pricing System to award a contract on the township's behalf in connection with the township of Lacy's government energy aggregation program. This is, uh, right now, there's currently Lacy Township, Manchester Township, and Stafford Township that are entering into this cooperative for electric aggregation. We will be in two thousand and sixteen, this year, within a valid rate until June of two thousand and seventeen, going out to bid for community energy aggregation, so hopefully save at least ten percent on the community's electric bills.
Move it. Second.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes. Item thirteen, resolution two thousand sixteen one twenty-one, authorizing the appointment of a building maintenance worker.
Resolution to township of Lacy County, Volusia State of New Jersey, appointing John Kelly to the position of building maintenance worker for the Department of Public Works. This is effective, uh, this coming Monday, April eighteenth. This is a replacement due to her retirement, and I'd like to introduce Mr. Kelly, who's sitting in the au- audience with us this evening.
Move it. Second.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes. Welcome aboard.
Yes, welcome aboard.
Resolution two thousand sixteen one twenty-two, authorizing leave of absence.
Resolution to township of Lacy County, Volusia State of New Jersey, authorizing a leave of absence for Shannon Quinn. This is extending a maternity leave of absence, it carries through until July thirty-first of sixteen.
Move it. Second.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Abstained.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes. Resolution two thousand sixteen one twenty-three, authorizing the appointment of members to the municipal alliance committee.
Resolution to township of Lacy County, Volusia State of New Jersey, appointing members to the municipal alliance committee of the township of Lacy, they are Debbie Smith, Bonnie Marshall, and Judy Spurlock.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes. Resolution, uh, right, resolution two thousand sixteen one twenty-four, authorizing the release of performance bond for block one thousand two, lot one point one seven.
Resolution to township of Lacy County, Volusia State of New Jersey, authorizing release of a site improvement performance guarantee for Liberty Overhead Door Company for block one thousand two, lot one point one seven upon the posting of a maintenance guarantee. This has been reviewed and recommended by the engineer.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes. Item seventeen, resolution two thousand sixteen one twenty-five, authorizing the cancellation of taxes due to a hundred percent disabled veteran deduction granted.
Resolution to township of Lacy County, Volusia State of New Jersey, authorizing the tax collector to cancel twenty sixteen taxes due on a property granted to one hundred percent disabled veteran exemption and refunding the resulting credit balance. This is on block eight thirty-nine, lot one, and block eleven forty-eight, lot twenty-six.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes. Item eighteen, resolution two thousand sixteen one twenty-six, authorizing the refund of deposit monies.
Resolution to township of Lacy County, Volusia State of New Jersey, authorizing refund of deposits held for the use of municipal facilities.
Move it. Second.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes. Item nineteen, resolution two thousand sixteen one twenty-seven, authorizing the payment of township bills.
Resolution to township of Lacy County, Volusia State of New Jersey, authorizing the payment of township bills in the amount of six million, nine hundred and twenty-four thousand, fifty-eight dollars and eighty cents.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes. Monthly reports.
For the month of March, the clerk's office collected receipts the amount of six thousand nine hundred and seventeen dollars and seventy-eight cents. The tax collector's office for the month of February collected receipts in the amount of twelve million, five hundred and forty-three thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars and sixty-nine cents. For the month of March, the tax collector's office collected receipts in the amount of six hundred and twenty-one thousand, two hundred and eighty-five dollars and thirty-eight cents. The Department of Community Development for the month of February collected receipts in the amount of ninety-four thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars and seventy-four cents. Road opening permits for the month of March were collected in the amount of two thousand twenty-five dollars. Recycling commodities in the amount of six hundred and four dollars. Truck parking spots in the amount of three thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Municipal docks for the month of March were collected in the amount of forty-six thousand, two hundred dollars, and the municipal court for the month of February collected receipts in the amount of twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and thirty-three dollars and sixty-five cents, and for the month of March, the municipal court collected receipts in the amount of twenty-four thousand, nineteen dollars and fourteen cents. Motion to accept the reports is read.
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve caucus meeting minutes of March twenty-fourth, two thousand sixteen?
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve township meeting minutes of March twenty-fourth, two thousand sixteen?
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Veronica, I'm standing on both, I wasn't here.
That's correct.
Um, item twenty-three, motion to approve budget meeting minutes of March seventeenth, two thousand sixteen?
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve Rappa license applications for the Rotary Club of Forked River and Forked River Tuna Club?
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Comments from the committee? Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, would first, uh, like to, uh, really congratulate one of our department heads, I recognize all the efforts of our department heads, we, we heard, uh, James Wieland talk tonight. Um, when he said there's a price point for seven weeks of summer camp, uh, it's coming out to about roughly fourteen dollars a week. Um, people have often heard me say that we do run a lean municipal government, you know, I believe that, I see it, I'm a small part of it, and I'm very proud of it, and our department heads, uh, like our chief of police, our leader in public works, Casey Parker, James, uh, they apply for and receive grants. Um, James, most recently, uh, recreational opportunities for individuals with disabilities grant, ninety-six hundred dollars, twenty-five thousand dollars for a, uh, ride in a jungle jam at one of our parks, um, and that's really the tip of the iceberg when you look at, uh, police and the, uh, work our municipal alliance does as well. Um, one of the other things, I know where the rubber hits the road and why some people are here tonight in the audience, uh, is for taxes, uh, we are taxpayers too, and I give you my word, I mean, we're working on these things, and we work on them together, and, uh, the credit should be spread out along with our department heads here and our, um, the financial people and our CFO. Uh, so, it wasn't about a week ago in this room with most of the members of our fire department or emergency services, we, uh, trying to do something novel, uh, really for Lacy Township. Uh, we had a professional grant writer here, we support our, uh, emergency service people, but I do think that we asked them to step out of their comfort zone when we asked them to write, um, federal grant applications. If anyone's familiar with the RFQ or RFA process, uh, it is very difficult, tedious, strenuous, and it takes a lot of time. And the thought was if we could have a professional grant writer that would charge per the grant, uh, and possibly, um, alleviate the stress from emergency, uh, department personnel while gaining one of these larger federal grants, because we are a nuclear town, uh, we all felt that that was a win-win. I'm hoping that that pans out, I'm hoping that that works out, I do think that's value added for our township, our taxpayers, and our residents. Um, in the same line of the sacrifice that the emergency services make along with their families, each year, and it goes to another grant, five thousand dollars from the state of New Jersey, I see our chief of Forked River Fire over there, uh, I believe our I believe our Department of Public Works manager Casey Parker will be there also. And I'm talking about Pheasant Run, May 7th, from 10 to 2. It's a fire-wise program. And it's really because of people like Casey Parker and Ray and all of our chiefs, Papo, everybody that has a hand in it, and all of the staff, and too many people to name right now, and so I apologize in advance, because everyone deserves to be named. This is something where we reduce the fire load at heightened season for fire, and we're able to take some of the items away from some of our senior housing and really try to avoid a situation where there's a fire, and really, you know, before one occurs. So I wanted to tell our residents about that, too. I'll finish with one more. The mayor and I, Tuesday night, were at a meeting and there was, I believe, more than one question on what are some of the programs in our schools. So I wanted an opportunity to tell the township about it. Some of the programs in our schools that don't directly impact Lacy Township taxpayers are, and I think it's emblematic of the good relationship that the county has with our schools, and I'm a small part of that. And we have programs going out to our schools by myself and colleagues at the county health department, hashtag drug code, driving responsible youth during prom time, Project Dry, we have alcohol EDU, Unique U, and these are programs, some of them are eight sessions long, at no charge to our, direct charge to our school district. Colleagues of mine and myself, we go out to the schools and we'll deliver these programs, not only in our schools here, but throughout the county. I'm proud of some of these things. And we're continuing to try to think outside the box. We could do none of it without our department heads, one of which who spoke tonight, the fire chief is over here, our public works director sitting in front of me. So these are some small things. Without being too long-winded, I want to welcome everyone here tonight and thank you. And these are some of the items that we're working on, and thank you for working with us.
Thank you, Pete. Meeting in McDonald's.
Thank you, Mayor. As liaison to the recreation department, I've spent a lot of my time since I came on board, working with Jim creating, getting more programs. But I got to tell you, Jim had it down and then when I walked in there and said, what can we do more? Need to get more residents involved, need to get older residents involved, and all of this, because that his taxpayer is paying for this. And he was very receptive to it, and as you saw tonight in his presentation, there's a lot going on in this town in recreation. And there's a lot that he didn't talk about because we're still in the process of working, working it out, making sure that it runs the right way before we break it out. So I just want to thank Jim for all his efforts and the people in the recreation department. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Meeting in Giuliano.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I would like to congratulate John Kelly. I think he'd be a good addition to Public Works back there. I've known you for a long time. I'm happy to have you aboard. You have a good gentleman in Casey Parker there. I think he's a great leader and you'll do quite well here, and we're happy to have you an addition here. Second, I'd like to mention the senior luncheon, April 29th, which is down at community hall. It's ran by the municipal alliance, which we all know the good job that they do. And I appreciate that, Heather, and the rest of the municipal alliance for all their dedication. Second, we have our final cycle of leaf collection. Am I right, Casey, to say the 18th? Okay? We have that, which is this month, the 18th. That's the last cycle. As a liaison also to MUA, we have the water flushing, which is starting at the end of April and going through July throughout the town. They'll be doing different sections of the town with all the flushing. This week and April 16th, this Saturday, I'd like to welcome, you know, have everybody come out and support the Lacy soccer and the softball opening day down at Gilly Park. Next Saturday, we have baseball down at Koon Park, which is opening day, which is April 23rd. Other than that, on a personal note, I would like to wish my mother-in-law, Marie Krieger, a happy 86th birthday. Today, she's 86 years old. I'm sure she'll thank you. Thank you very much. Other than that, that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Nick. Meeting in Quinn.
Okay. First of all, I want to thank Linda here, Veronica, our department heads, you know, putting the budget together that we just adopted this evening. Budgets are always a difficult thing to deal with because you always have a lot more requests than you have the ability to fund. So it's always a very challenging time of year, but these ladies, you know, work on it, you know, day to day, trying to get it together before we all sit down as a governing body and then we come together and start picking and choosing what we can afford to do and what we can't afford to do. And unfortunately, we disappoint a lot of people sometimes, but we do the best we can keeping the taxpayer in line. Having said that, I want to congratulate Forkett River Fire Company because after waiting a number of years, we were able to fund a fire truck for the department this year to replace two trucks that have certainly aged, I believe, over 30 years old and not even conforming anymore to safety requirements that we have, so. And I want to, you know, thank each and every one of these volunteers sitting back here. They're all from the Forkett River Fire Company. They all give their heart and soul to the residents of this town 24/7. And although, yeah, I know you, we're disappointed in your number of years in the past, I'm happy to see you all here tonight walking out happy for a change, but we do truly appreciate everything. Yeah. You know, like the guy said, it's rare that we get Casey Parker in the room, so I want to, you know, thank Casey. Everything that we own in this town, everything that we, the roads we drive on, the parks we play in, you know, really, the responsibility of making sure it's all done right comes down to one person, and that's Casey Parker. Raise your hand, Casey, if you don't know who I'm talking about. Again, Casey's got a smile on his face. Winter's over, he's not concerned about snow anymore. You know, we're going into what's really our better time of the year and everybody enjoys it. But I, you know, I want to thank you personally, you know, because you, I've been here a number of years with you, you know, each year it only gets better and you're always facing more and more challenges, moment of obstacle, but you come through with flying colors each time, so we truly thank you for that. John, you're sitting next to two outstanding gentlemen, you know, John on your one side, Casey on the other side, and I certainly wish you the best. Twenty-five years will fly right by, so don't worry about it. Time goes quick.
That's good.
And the last thing I did, I just wanted to, you know, I figured Nikki would, you know, wish Maria a happy birthday. I call, I'm very close to Nikki and her family, Marie, and Marie is probably one of our greatest volunteers in town here. She runs, she works at senior lunches every month. She was cooking up until, I guess, three or four months ago. She did all the cooking over the years, and she turned 86 today. I feel like I'm calling my mother-in-law, I called on the way over here to wish her happy birthday, and I said to Nikki, I was in the car for 20 minutes in the parking lot here because she was just yelling at me about one thing or another.
That's where you were, Lee. Where you were.
But she's truly an outstanding, wonderful woman, and I certainly wish her many, many more years. So thank you very much. And Marie, if you're watching, happy birthday. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you, Gary. I'll be brief. I'm going to echo some of the comments that Gary made. In particular, our budget is always a tough time of year, so I really want to thank all the department heads and all the volunteer companies that come before us and have the requests, and the police chief. We do our best we can with the budget. It's very difficult every year. In particular, I would like to thank Linda for her job on the budget. When we started this in like February, I thought it was going to be way worse. So she did a great job on it, so I just want to thank her personally. In addition to that, two other minor items, I guess Casey can confirm, we've received a DOT grant for East Lacy Road.
That's correct.
An amount of $213,000 that will go to paving East Lacy Road. Is that correct?
We're currently working on the design there right now.
You know, not the whole road? Is it, how far?
Community hall entrance down to the entrance to Southland.
Oh, the whole, all, all of East Lacy Road. Oh, that's great. And finally, I had a chance about two weeks ago to have a roundtable discussion with State Senate President Stephen Sweeney, along with other mayors of Ocean County. It was very informative, and he was just there to listen to concerns of the mayor's of Ocean County and see what he could do to help address some of them. So with that, I'll open up the floor to the public. Any, I mean, you have any questions or comments?
I guess I have to tell my name?
Yes.
My name is John Romalia. I live at 309 Base ID Sparkway. And just, here, just one second. It's kind of a, it's kind of a, it's kind of a...
Sir, can you speak into the microphone? We can't hear you.
Sure. Yeah, just one second. I have prepared something. Just find where it is on my tablet. Oh, here we go. Okay, good. Okay, so I would like to just read this to you. I have some questions in it. I'd like to go through the whole short narrative and then get your response to it. Thank you for hearing me tonight. With your permission, I'd like to read this short statement and review for questions. Let me get right to the point. Have any of you ever lost a child? I have. Fifteen years ago, my son, Matthew Magnette, was introduced to heroin in the Lacy School System. On April 17th, 2007, after many efforts to rid himself of his addiction, he took his own life. He went out on the bridge in Red Bank on the train trestle and stood in front of a train and took his life. Since then, I have discovered so many of his friends caught up in the same trap. Too many are now dead, struggling with their addiction still or in recovery. The ripple effect has destroyed too many good families. All three young men I knew personally, I mean, I threw, I took them fishing, I played catch with them. These were kids that were on my street, in my backyard. They were all good kids and they all came from good families. And as you probably know, Lacy Township has now been reported as the 18th most dangerous New Jersey community to live in regarding heroin addiction. Which brings me to my first real question. How aware are you of the problem? You don't have to answer now. Besides picking the low-hanging fruit, you know, when I refer to low-hanging fruit, I'm talking about, you know, the kid at 7-Eleven or the one at the Wawa. What is the plan to reverse the alarming trend of increasing new addiction to young students in Lacy Township? That's my first main question. My next question is, what procedures are currently being implemented to identify the problem at the local schools and address the root cause of drug abuse in our school The third, the next point I'd like to make is, what can be done to educate the parents? Because really, quite honestly, parents are very naive. You know, I came from, grew up in Clifton, New Jersey, and many of my friends died from heroin overdoses, and our parents didn't know anything. I thought I knew more than they did, and my son is gone today. How can the township officials work with the school systems, law enforcement, parents, and work together to head off the dangerous substance, substances like heroin, cocaine, speed, ecstasy, all the dangerous drugs that are out there? And we have a lot of disposable income here in Lacy, and, you know, kids are dying. And the reason I'm here, the reason I haven't been here in a long time, you know, to speak to you directly, and I know this is, this, this board changes, this is a legacy problem that goes back, I'm talking 15 years now since my son was addicted, all right? And, but it still remains that the trend is worsening. The reason I'm here tonight is because one of those kids that I used to play catch with in my backyard just recently died. He committed suicide. And the reality is, is that the township doesn't probably know about most of these kids, because my son died in Red Bank. Another kid died in Long Branch. I'm not mentioning names, you know, but, and another one died recently close by. So you really aren't aware of the problem that started here in Lacy Township in our schools and has led to divorce? I mean, how many families, how many marriages survive a dead child even from something as horrible as leukemia? But, you know, when it, when it goes to somebody, suicide, it gets tougher, you know, there's blame, but you need to try not to blame. So really, I don't expect answers from you tonight. I really, I don't expect you to address all these questions that I've just asked. It's too much right now, you know? But what I would like to do is, I would like to come back in a month. You said that you recently went to a mayor's group, and I'm sure the issue of addiction, you know, came up at that meeting.
It did.
Okay. So being a person who has worked in, in the area of information technology, I'm wondering how we can share information to identify the problems early on. My wife was a speech pathologist. She worked in K through six. And what happens is, really, those teachers go to the teacher's room every day and they talk about the kid in second grade that did this. And they talk about the parents and what the parents, you know, whether they were trying to help or whether they weren't putting coats on their kids when they went out. So, you know, this, this intervention needs to start early. It needs to start early and it needs to continue through those horrible middle years of middle school and high school, and that needs to be addressed throughout the continuum of education that we have. But we have an epidemic in Lacy, and I've paid a great cost.
I'm very sorry for your loss.
I'm sure, you don't have to mention that. I know all of you are probably parents, you know, and you all looked at your kids, you know, when they were babies and say, are they still breathing? Are they okay? Right? I mean, we all did it, right?
Absolutely.
He was a good kid.
Right. This is a problem, it's hard to address a problem like this. I don't even know where to begin. Our, our police force is very proactive inside the schools. We had the chief speaking the other night at a meeting that me and a deputy mayor were at. Their outreach in the community as far as drug awareness and education, I think, is exemplary. But as far as actually doing to keep kids off it, I don't know. When I was a kid, well, it was, I hate to say times were different, but they were. I was able to get a job at a very young age, I delivered newspapers. I was able to keep myself occupied. Now, I pumped gas at Lacy Shell. Those jobs aren't available to, to teenagers anymore, they go to adults. So there's a lot of free time on, on the teen years, and I'm not sure what exactly, you know, how you can keep kids away from drugs, other than educate them as best we can. And I think our, I think our school system and our police force, it's at the top of the list. As far as the police goes, it's probably their biggest priority in town. What else they can, you know, what else can be done, I'm not sure. I have a good answer for you. It came up at the meeting with Senator Sweeney, and nobody had a good answer.
This is an epidemic. That's throughout the country.
Absolutely.
And my wife was a teacher. She headed up the DARE program. It doesn't work, okay? DARE does not work. You know, conflict mediation, you know, I've been involved in all these stories at the dinner table for 33 years of my wife's career, right? And the best, the best place to identify this problem is in that K through six, because those teachers see the problems. They almost foreshadow the kid that's going to get in trouble later on. And this is about intervention. This is, you know, and it shouldn't be that, you know, it has to be treated as a disease. It has, it can't be treated like you're an offender and lock them up, because that's, that's not doing anything, you know? It's not going to help.
No.
It's not the solution. So what I'm asking for you folks to do is to put, especially the mayors, mayors, you know, put your heads together. And, and you say you like to think out of the box here in Lacy Township? Well, I'm asking you to think out of the box. I'm asking you to really stretch and think about what you can do, and I'm looking for a champion. I'm looking right at you and I'm saying, I'm looking for a champion. It's not for me. It's for that eighth grader, right? That might take the wrong step a year from now and end up on a trestle, standing in front of a train. My son had no heroin in his body when he died, but he just couldn't live with himself anymore.
That's terrible.
That's all I have to say. So can I come back in a month and can you tell me what that you, what you've talked about and how you might possibly brainstorm this problem and think of solutions, at least some ideas on how to better deal with the problem here?
Not to put you on the spot, Pete, but Pete works at the Board of Health, so he's very familiar with this issue.
Well, I could tell you that, first, I am sorry for your loss, and I have, as a matter of course, taken a telephone call from a parental loved one. I have colleagues that put people in rehabilitation and across the care continuum every day, inpatient detoxification, intensive outpatient outpatient. And what I'll tell you is that the trend that we see, because this is, there are many, many people around the county and in Lacy doing this full-time. The logic models are showing us that the first dabble into use into some of this stuff and some of this poison is as early as age 11. And what we can tell you is that there's a robust effort. There's the GCADA, the Governor's Council on Alcoholism and Drug Abuse. In most of our municipalities, there's a municipal alliance coordinator who runs programs, ATOD, A-T-O-D, Alcohol, Tobacco, or Other Drug Use Prevention Programs. We have programs from the Ocean County Health Department in middle schools. We have people that go out, as I had mentioned, I didn't know who you were, I didn't know who you were, that you were sitting in the audience, but I'm glad I had the comments that I did tonight because they were the truth. In no way do I take credit for them, or am I alone. We have colleagues, we have a great prosecutor in this county who has dovetailed his enforcement efforts with a robust education and outreach program. I was in front of about 700 students yesterday at a high school in Ocean County. I have been in front of the students here at Lacy Township High School. We use some of his, he has on OCPo, via website, several different short movies that were all built at no cost to the taxpayer that we show kids throughout the county, especially in the high schools. They were funded, acted out by kids in the high schools and funded solely by fines from people that infracted, New Jersey statutes and etymology or 2C criminal code for having a drug offense. So some very novel things are going on.
They're not working.
Well, there's...
They're not working.
I can tell you, I can tell you, sir, respectfully, that the, you know, sometimes it feels like we're pushing water with a fork or there's a screen door on the submarine, but I will tell you this. I will tell you this. There's more people working at this and more people givin' ram about this now than has ever been the case before. And there is innovative thinking, there are people out in our schools. Now, there's not only guidance counselors, there's substance awareness counselors or SACS in the high schools. There are some middle schools in Ocean County that have an SAC in middle schools, not just the high schools. People are not in silos anymore. And I could tell you, I'm so proud of this high school and this school system because these folks are in contact with our, our chief, who has his doctorate and who will tell you more about drugs than most other chiefs in, in the county or the state. And we have a municipal alliance that's working with people in our high school. Everybody is working together. So they say it takes a village. I see more people working together, standing, standing in a line, shoulder to shoulder to fight this epidemic than I ever have before. And I want to give you assurance that we're not giving up the fight. There's a lot of effort that has been going on. There is a lot of funding now for early intervention and prevention grants. Some of the logic models tell us for every dollar we spend on prevention, that's five we don't spend on detox. There's some detoxists and some clinics that are up to $1,800 a day, okay?
I pay for them. You don't have to explain it to me. You know, I'm out lots of money.
And it's hard.
And I would have paid twice if my son could be here today. And what I'm saying is, all the programs are farce. The rehab programs are farce. There's very few of them. They take your money and they, you know, they give you false hope. There's very few clinics that actually produce positive outcomes. And, you know, and people push things like movies and papers. The best place, you know, I said this early on, the best place to fight this off is, one, educate the parents. You know, why is a kid sleeping in class? How come an A student goes from an A student to somebody who doesn't show up to somebody who's a straight D student? You know, it's about getting in there early and, and being proactive. And that doesn't mean, you know, crushing them. It means trying to find a way to lift them up and help them. And I looked at those Boy Scouts here today, and my heart leapt for those kids. I wish my kid was one of those kids.
So do I.
So please, I ask you to think about what you can do. That's all I'm here. I'm not accusing anybody of not doing their job.
Right. I, we understand. As a township, again, our police force, it's their top priority, but the, a lot of the issues you brought up are, it's a, that's a school, we don't have any control over the school system. So the issues that you're asking...
You, you control the budgets for the schools?
No, we don't.
No, we don't.
You don't?
We don't have anything to do with the schools. So a lot of stuff...
You can't put no pressure on the school boards whatsoever?
Well, you have the opportunity to attend a school board meeting just like this. Mrs. Chenza is in the back row, she's a school board member, she can tell you when the next meeting is. Because it's certainly well, very important to show up and send the same message over there, because we work in conjunction with them. But we're totally separate entities.
We would help, we help the school as much as we can, but we don't, I don't, we are not involved in their day-to-day operations. I don't know, we don't know what their budget is. They, they govern autonomous from the township committee.
Okay.
But we provide, you know...
We, our police departments are available, any programs, anything we need to do over there. But they, they have drug testing that they, they run it themselves.
Right, they do.
They have programs over there that if the kids turn themselves in, the first time to pass.
Right.
There are different entities available.
Not to put Regine on the spot, I believe they test all extracurricular, any extracurricular activity is drug tested. Is that accurate?
Extracurricular, yes.
Extracurricular. In addition to that, even parking passes count as extracurricular activities.
Yes.
Is that correct? So not, so even kids that are not involved in extracurricular activities, per se, by parking on school property, that counts and they're subject to drug, drug testing.
That's a good stuff.
So they do, actually do quite a bit.
Forty-a-month.
What's that?
I think it's forty-a-month.
Forty drug testing?
Forty randoms a month, yes.
Forty random drug testing.
Let me, let me close with this. I mean, there is one thing you said, and respectfully, I'll disagree with you. I don't think Lacy Township's a dangerous place to live. I think it's, it's an outstanding place to live, and I'll tell you why. The heroin epidemic and opiate addiction is something that's going to, that does and will continue, very unfortunately, affect every municipality in the county and every county in this state and most counties, counties in this nation. How it's reported, how overtly it's reported, is a decision by different departments and different people and different stakeholders and shareholders. But because it may not be as robustly reported somewhere else, does not mean that it's not there. This type of addiction, in particular with opiates and benzos, doesn't see race, creed, color, socioeconomic status. I mean, there's, everybody is affected by it equally and across the board. But I will tell you that I see more effort being involved in this at the county side, living in Lacy Township. I see, I see so much effort in our town and by our police department, in our schools, and in particular with parents that are involved, that, you know, I, I, I don't see it in as many other places or to the extent that we see it, but I could give you every assurance that there's people here, like I said, we're standing shoulder to shoulder, we're fighting this fight. But just... But just consider the source. Lacy Township is not a dangerous place to live. It's a great place to live, work.
I respectfully disagree because I've lived in the neighborhoods where the kids have fallen and I know, I know the names of the dead and I know the names of the kids that are addicted and I know the names of the kids that are in rehab. I know the ones that are failing and, you know, because.
It's not exclusive to this township, sir. I assure you that.
What's that?
It's not exclusive to this zip code.
No, it's not. It's not. But I'm just saying, it's gonna get worse unless something is done. It's a trend. It's trending worse. You know, I'm, I'm, all my life, you talked about matrix and data points and everything. That's my living. I did it for the U.S. Navy. I understand what's going on. I'm looking at the numbers and I have to look you straight in the eye and say, I respectfully disagree with what you're saying. It's getting worse and I, I'll, I'll just leave it there.
I appreciate that.
Let me just make one comment. Um, I don't know if you're aware of Regina, Red Night, is that coming up anytime soon at the high school?
Patrick's trying to plan one right now. We're not sure.
Okay, good. Because the high school in conjunction with municipal alliance run Red Night event every year and, and they've had speakers similar to yourself that have suffered a tremendous loss in their lives. They've had speakers that really hit home. The first year or two, it was absolutely packed. It was, you know, an overwhelming amount of people came out and it was a great event. Unfortunately, it dwindled off, I guess the third or fourth year started to drop down a little bit, but people like you that, that can tell a real story certainly have more an impact on, you know, people when they sit down and talk about it. Our police chief, uh, does a tremendous presentation. I know I wasn't at the meeting the other night when he did the presentation, but if Red Night doesn't occur this year, then we'll have the police chief do a presentation possibly at one of our public meetings here because they are making a lot of progress. Um, I oversee the police department. For the last couple of years, our overdoses have gone down drastically. We had our first overdose, I guess about two weeks ago for the year 2016. Uh, the officers are doing a much better, you know, not the officers, they, everyone is just doing a much better job and then, you know, working to try and offset the problem in Lacy Township. What Mr. Curtello says is very, very true. We don't shovel it under a rug. We make sure that anything and everything that happens is put out in the public. We believe in that. The chief believes in that. We want parents to know, we want neighbors to know, well, this person is, is involved because I got news for you. If Johnny's involved and Johnny's friend is my son, well, my son's not gonna hang around with Johnny, you know, you have to network and have to do these things. And the chief has been very, very proactive in the three years he's been chief to try and turn this thing around. The, the deaths we had about two weeks ago, unfortunately, was a twenty or twenty-one year old, you know, young man that had, you know, had issues over a number of years.
There's another young man who just died recently you don't know about because he died someplace else. That's what sparked my interest to come here.
Yeah, yeah, if, if that occurs.
And that is my issue. My issue is that it happens here and they go someplace else to rehab or to die. And that's the part, that's the data point that's missing from all of this. And I've been thinking about, how do I present you with the real statistics of what's going on in this town?
Right.
You know, I've been brainstorming where, you know where it is? It's in the funeral homes. It's the people that you go look at the, at the registries in the funeral homes because they die someplace else and they come back here to Lacy or Township to be buried.
I understand. Yeah, but that's in, in every municipality across the country.
But it starts here, Mr. Quinn.
Yeah. But the reality is the, the chief is probably the most aggressive chief in Oshie County when it comes to trying to, to fight this problem. Uh, he has spoken numerous things, like Mr. Curtello, uh, county things to try and, and get our word out there and, and work it. We had a drug bust about two weeks ago, the week of Easter, we had a drug bust where we had seven people arrested. Those seven people were all distributing drugs. Uh, the, the person that was transporting it from Camden back to, to the folks in Forkett River was arrested. The, the biggest problem the chief has and the prosecutor in Oshie County has is that the, the laws, the way they're set up, don't send people to jail, even though, you know, we believe that distributors should certainly spend time in jail. But if that person goes into drug, into the courts and tells the judge that he's an addict, he comes out of the courts and goes into drug court and goes to rehab and a month later we're back on the streets. So they're all repetitive. We're seeing these people over and over and over again. Uh, we, we have to find a system that works, but it's not something that, that this municipality can change on their own. Municipalities have to work together, not only throughout New Jersey, but throughout the entire country because it's.
It's throughout the country, yes. Because this is the opening coming from Afghanistan. They're killing our kids. It's eighty-five percent fewer. I mean, people who think they know how to shoot dope die because they're getting hit with hot shots.
And it's so cheap. I mean, it's five dollars.
It's cheaper to pop. It's become the alternative drug to marijuana because marijuana is so expensive and it doesn't keep you high that long. And heroin just flattens you out and you're just wasted for God knows how long. So I'm sorry.
We appreciate you coming.
I don't wanna get away from the microphone right now. Thank you for indulging.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Anything else? What else?
Anyway, my name is Walker Long. I live eighteen oh one Lakeside Drive. Um, and it's actually, um, pretty, pretty like comforting here. Somebody actually knows what's going on out here. Um, I didn't really think somebody actually had that much of a clue, but, um, I just can't, it's my first meeting I've ever been to. Um, I think being a police dog, a K-nine unit on the force, that's probably your next bet to combating the heroin issue. Um, and that's probably the biggest issue you're gonna have. I mean, you're gonna get people that are addicted, the rehabs, this and that, this and that. Why not stop it where it starts? You know what I'm saying? I'm a DJ. I'm willing to raise the money if you wanna ever set anything up.
All right. And.
I wanna raise ten thousand. I can raise ten thousand with you guys if you're on board. Get a police dog. I have an officer, uh, his name's Andy Slowder. He wanted to do it in the past.
Uh, we'd be interested in anything if you wanna sit down and talk about a fundraiser. It's, we're more than happy to sit down.
Okay, okay.
We'd definitely have to meet with the chief to see if it's something that fits within the guidelines of the department.
I'd like to meet with the chief. He knows who I am, so, um, I've been, I've been in the streets of Lacy. It's worse than you guys think right now. I'm not gonna lie to you.
Okay.
So I know, I know a lot of that. I'm trying to, I've been here ten years and, you know, I've seen it get, get a lot worse, so.
Okay.
So, but, uh, I didn't mean to bother you guys. I think it'll work, so. Just trying to jump in, just letting you guys know, you know, I'm a DJ. So if the chief wants to meet with me, you know, I don't know how to do it.
Why don't you do me a favor? Come up here, give me your, I don't want you to read your phone number out over the public screen. Give me your phone number so we can try and get, set up a meeting.
All right, excellent. Um, eight, uh, six zero nine, nine zero six.
You called me off guard and thought you were gonna piggyback that issue.
No, 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 I don't even want to. Guys, do what you gotta do. I just wanna try to.
All right, that's, all right.
Um, nine zero six one seven five six.
All right, we'll give you a call and try to set something.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Very much.
Come on up.
All right, here we go. All right.
Do you need me to dress?
No. Twenty-five Dunbury Drive, Forkett River. I reside in the Seabreeze at Lacy Active Adult Community. I'm also a member of the Seabreeze at Lacy Civics Affairs Committee, which some of you are aware. And one of our missions is to have relationships with municipal government, county government, state government. So, and we've met with, we've met with several people. We've met with you folks. We've met with Freeholder Barrett. We've met with the, uh, county officials, the tax director. Uh, we've met with Senator Connors. So, uh, you know, we've, you know, one of our major issues is of course taxes. And I think Mr. Kuratolo, uh, you know, highlighted that in the beginning. So we did do an appeal this year. Uh, not as many people as last year, but some people, quite frankly, felt like they didn't get anywhere, that they really weren't heard, they didn't really get a fair shake. In the intervening period of time here, we went and we have people on our committee canvassed other assessors in Oshie County, Monmouth County, particularly where there's new construction, Toll Brothers, Povanian, of senior communities. And it seems like these assessors, they, they get it. They get it that people that are buying new construction are paying a premium because you're gonna get, you know, things you want, particularly people who are coming down, they're retiring and they say, well, you know, I want this in the house. I want certain things. I know we did. So you take the base price of the house and, you know, and I've described the seductive toll sales process before of buying, you know, structural options, you know, high hat lights, moving windows and doors, thousands and thousands of dollars which have nothing to do with the value of the home when you go to resell it. We've got the data and we'll, we're, we're gonna bring the data to the hearing. We've got data from outside of this community and, and the data's very strong and very compelling. So we've sat down with Mr. Fitzpatrick. We've had Toll Brothers executives come in and meet with Mr. Fitzpatrick, all for the purpose of educating him and saying, this is how Toll prices houses. Here's what, and he can look at what the resale values are. If we all found it, you know, online, he could find it online. Okay? So in spite of all that and all these discussions, we file an appeal. What does Mr. Fitzpatrick do? Sends everybody a letter, cross-appealing at the full deed price. This is the antithesis of what we're trying to accomplish here. He's slapping us in the face. I don't know if he's chewing it out of retaliation, his ego. I don't know what the problem is with this guy. And I, quite frankly, if you guys appoint him again, you're gonna have a, we'll bring the, to two-hundred-and-fifteen homeowners in here, okay? And their spouses. And, you know, we'll go to the press. We're very unhappy with him. We talked to other assessors who get it. Barniget gets it. There's Povanian communities down there. There's McNabbie communities. Lenar just closed out the Ware Town community. They understand how the pricing models work. It's unfair to assess us at the level we're being assessed. Because people are selling houses right now. Toll is about forty percent into this project. We are essentially buying depreciating assets. This is the first time in my life I bought a house that isn't appreciating, it's depreciating. If I went to sell this house today, I would take a thirty-five percent loss. We have people who have sold for a variety of reasons. Moved to Florida, wife didn't wanna be here. We had one, we had one person move from one street to another, bought a second house from Toll, sold that house thirty, thirty-five percent below what they paid for. This is what the, the value of the house is. We've got to reconcile this because we're being over assessed. What's happening is it's impacting Toll's ability to sell because it's now a sales objection. I'd had the opportunity in the past week, Toll had a brunch where they invite in prospective buyers. Everybody I talked to, what's going on with the taxes here? Why are the taxes going up so much? What's happening? Why, you know, because they, they're, they're doing their due diligence and they're looking, they're concerned. And they go like, well, you know, it's just a compelling reason for people to relocate from New York, New Jersey, North Jersey, Bergen County, Union County, is to lower their taxes, lower their, you know, cost of living. And this is what's going, you know, what we're, what we're experiencing here is the absolute antithesis of this. And this letter coming out, in addition to a waste of paper, ink, postage, is a big slap on our face and we're really unhappy about it. And, you know, we, this committee represents the good people of Seabreeze, some of which are here, but we're very unhappy about it.
So, you know, we had this conversation many times. I had it often with residents of Toll Brothers. Uh, our tax assessor, uh, does the job that he's supposed to do. He follows the guidelines that, 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 I guess, been handed down by the state and he follows whatever guidelines he's supposed to follow. So when he, uh, when you file an appeal, he's, he's right to file a cross-appeal or however appeals necessary. He doesn't get any guidance from us. He does his job the way he feels the best, it's the best way to do his job. So, uh, you know, there's a process to file a tax appeals. I'm sure you're following your end of it. He's, again, following his end of it. It's the best answer I can give you.
We understand that he has the right to file an appeal. But, you know, you have the right to shoe yourself in the foot too. You have your right to, you know, walk on your tongue and shit your feet in your mouth.
I can't speak specifically to, to, you know, I imagine when he looks at the, you know, as the appeals come in, I don't think he singles anybody out. I think he looks at it, you know, he looks at the appeals, goes and checks whatever data he has to check. If he feels that it's, you know, it's being unfairly represented on your end, that's why he followed, files a cross-appeal. I'm guessing.
Let, let me just say a few words because, uh, I've been in the meetings with, with Stephen, you know, as the mayor and sort of last year I, you know, heard a lot about our tax assessor at the meetings as well. Um, you know, we, we, we've had meetings here and then, you know, the meeting you're referring to with, um, Freeholder Bartlett, um, I was at that meeting as well with a couple of you folks from Toll Brothers. We also had, uh, township administrator there, our county administrator, Call Block, was there. Chelsea, the head of our taxation board for the, um, the county itself, she's the go-to person with, you know, the buck stops here. Um, and, and going, if you go back in, in time, you know, last year we had that meeting where Toll Brothers came in and that, that was really, in my opinion, a breaking point to try and start getting things going in the right direction again. Because this municipality, when we worked with Toll Brothers in the beginning, we were very, you know, upfront. We wanted the project. We wanted them to come in and be successful. We, we figured realistically they'd be in and out of here in five years and, uh, what are they, eight or nine years already into the project and it, like, as you said, forty percent built out. So, but the problem was that Toll Brothers never gave us any of the data until last year at that meeting, breaking down the, the options. We would get a deed coming through from the, from the clerk up in the county and the deed would say five hundred thousand dollars. So automatically we would assess the house based on the deed price. And the day we had the meeting up in the county with the Freeholders, Chelsea made it very clear because she brought the document out and she said, state law says, okay, you, you are gonna be assessed, assessed based on the deed price unless we have something else to work with, which we didn't up until that point in time. The Toll Brothers meeting took place after all the assessments went out last year. So moving forward, you know, now, after having the discussions with, with the meetings we had here with the mayor and then the discussions at the county, you folks had said you were gonna file the appeals, which we told you you should. We should certainly do that. Mark has a habit, it's not just Toll Brothers, anybody that files an appeal, he automatically cross appeals and, and files, uh, also. But that doesn't mean that can't be discharged once you get into the hearing itself. I believe that, you know, with the documentation you have now, provided that, you know, you come in with comparables like Chelsea had said you have to do, with the exception of them being, you know, distress sales, you know, when they're foreclosures or, or somebody passed away or something like that, those wouldn't fall into play and be utilized by this sort of taxation when you do it. Um, I believe that you're, you're gonna, you know, have a case more so than you had last year.
We believe so.
Yeah, I can't say that it's gonna happen because again, Mark Fitzpatrick is an autonomous. He's outside of our realm. He's outside of our realm. We brought him in, we hired him. He's on his first term and as you very well know, that the second term is subject to, you know, his performance, whether or not the governing body at that time chooses to take and rehire, reappoint. And if anybody at that time does choose to reappoint, that person becomes tenured and, you know, basically is here for as long as they choose to be. The only way that it could be dealt with is by you folks filing the appeal because we don't have the ability to take and march downstairs and say, "Mark, this is what we have. This is, you know, we believe the case." So, it has to go through the process. Chelsea and her assistant were very clear that they're gonna have more involvement in the process this time out and we're certainly gonna make sure they have a heads up when these cases are coming in because we want to make sure that everything is done, you know, similar to what, you know? There was no agreements reached by any parties involved, but we all heard what was said and we all believed that there's procedures to follow and that at the end of the day, there should be some sort of relief given. But that's, again, that's something that the board that decides the appeals will make that final determination.
But Gary, we were informed that Mr. Fitzpatrick was reprimanded last year for his conduct and how he handled the appeals last year.
Not by this governing body?
By the county.
I think he got a letter from the county, but that wasn't a reprimand. That was, you know, more or less, you know, saying, "Hey, you know, there's specific ways to deal with taxpayers." And we would certainly say the thing because I had that conversation with him myself personally a number of times and I thought we're, you know, getting better.
We expected, quite frankly, we just, we, our expectation was we wouldn't receive a cross filing at full deed price. This is the same study pulled last year.
I think you read more into that than it is, though. It's, we do it with everybody.
Maybe I am, but it's, you know, I, it's now becoming a trend.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay? So, we look at it that, you know, we want to be fair and equitable. We want to be treated fair. As you know, the Seabreeze community doesn't burden the township. We don't call the police department. We're not a police problem. We're, we take care of our own roads and everything. You know, we provide a huge societal benefit. We send no one to school. We pay for, we pay school taxes. So, you know, we, you know, and needless to say, our contribution to the local GDP, we measured it. We, an average is 39,000. 39,000 household times 215 households, you know? The German butcher remodeled his whole place because of us. Put in new machines.
Yeah. My hope is that this cycle that we go through, we get onto the ground where we should be and then move forward to make it equitable. We want to see Toll Brothers out of there. We don't want them, you know, for another 10 years, we want to see that job built out.
And we want them to be successful as well.
Of course. Yeah, you've got a big investment there.
And we want to take control of our own and our own destiny. That's why we encourage Toll Brothers to come down and provide the data and educate everybody.
Which, again, was a huge item for us. That really gave us a lot to work with.
Okay. We have an appraiser and what we've requested of the county is that if we could have all of the Seabreeze appeals heard, you know, at once, it would be expeditious for all involved. And I think it would show that there's only a handful of models in Seabreeze that are relatively the same. But when you got one model and, you know, Toll Brothers says, "This model is 2,500 square feet." Mr. Fitzpatrick says it's 3,000 square feet. Well, that's like an extra room or someplace. I'm looking for the room. You know? I mean, you know, it's, I don't have it. You know, there's a discrepancy there. And this has got to be reconciled, but, you know, we've got the same model houses, one house after the other, and they got different square footage, different assessed values in the same house. A Farmington is a Farmington, a Fairhaven is a Fairhaven. Let's be, you know, we want to have some consistency to this model.
Yeah. The cops are gonna be a huge thing, though, Nick. You gotta make sure you...
We have an appraiser, we have a cop, and, you know, we've got a lot of data.
I just wanted, just to be clear, that we do understand how much Toll Brothers community provides to the township. Gary Altestis, both him and I sat on the planning board. It was a very long fight to get that community passed. So, we fought very hard to have that community built. So, you know, we're not looking to, you know, make anybody uncomfortable. We're trying to. But we appreciate everything that community does for us.
We told everyone when that community was first coming to town, that's gonna be the best rate of all this town has ever seen other than the power plant. And we still believe that.
Right.
But we have to get that thing built out.
Yes. One other item, and Mr. Giuliano and I spoke about this, water pressure.
I'll let you take that one, Dave.
Water pressure, you know, the water pressure and, quite frankly, we're tired of hearing, and I've heard from the MUA and the gentleman down at the MUA.
Mr. Wolf.
Yeah, Mr. Wolf. The state minimum, 30 PSI, you know, I mean, I went to the state and I went back and I looked, that state minimum, that law of 30 PSI, that's when Lincoln was president and they were filling water troughs for horses in the street. And the reason why the 30 PSI is so that the water, contaminated water, didn't back up into the, into the water system. You know? We have new homes, modern homes, with Kohler, expensive Kohler plumbing fixtures. Call Kohler customer service and they said, "Well, our fixtures don't really work below 58 PSI. We recommend 65 to 75 PSI." Well, you know, we're over there at 48. They measure, the MUAs come out and said, "It's 48 at the hydrant. It's 48 at the house until I open my shower." Now, we went and sampled some houses today on Dunbarry Drive and everybody's 48 with the water off. Open up the master shower, it's 38. Turn on the irrigation system, it's 28. Well, that's blow statement. So, I can't irrigate my lawn, take a shower, because it'll be like Chinese water torture, dripping out in the faucet. So, you know, this is a province and it's gotten to be a problem. Like, if you go to other Toll communities in Monmouth County, for example, where the water pressure's higher, you can go into the design center and get one of these master shower things with the heads on the wall that, you know, spray your bodies, spray your head. Toll won't even, Toll eliminated them from this community. They won't allow the design center to give people here that option because we don't have the water pressure to support it. That's the problem.
Again, the, have you been to the MUA board meeting to discuss this?
Yes. We've been to the MUA. They've come out, I've got an engineering report that says the hydrant flows at 1,000 gallons per minute. Well, God forbid if there's a fire and these great folks over here, they got a booster pump on the truck. What's needed over here is a booster pump. Somebody's gotta get the water pressure up. We realize that we're west of this tower and the gradient is going that way toward the water, you know, and we're west of the tower and, you know, some of the elevations in Seabreeze are 55 feet, 60 feet. So, we're probably, you know, halfway up this tower. And I'm told the tower fluctuates 16 feet. So, you know, the water pressure's low.
It does, yeah.
So, we, somebody's gotta, you know, it, we don't know, quite frankly, as homeowners, we don't care if it's Toll's problem or if it's the MUA's problem. Although, we're paying the MUA for water service and we're not getting, you know, we're not getting the pressure that we think we need. So, somebody's gotta come up there and either say, "Well, Toll, you built the place, you know, you, you know..." The tower was here before the community was built, am I correct?
Yeah, but the, when a developer comes in and develops a piece of property, the developer has to take and put in the lines, water lines, sewer lines. And if there's not enough pressure, it really is the developer's burden to take and increase that pressure to the point where...
Then they need to be compelled to put in a booster pump.
I mean, what might have to occur might have to get Toll down here at an MUA meeting and have a meeting between the two parties.
After I spoke to you, I spoke to Mr. Wolf and he did reach out to the, I forget the gentleman's name.
Matt Markovic. He called me this morning to tell me, and Mr. Wolf told him that the pressures in Seabreeze are 50 to 55 and they're not, they're 48, it says in the engineering report.
And Mr. Wolf did speak to me today and say that he was going to set up a meeting with that gentleman to come down here.
Good.
With us. And first, he's gonna be coming to the next MUA meeting to speak to us, so I have a good idea of what his deal was over there. I know what the MUA did. Now I need to find out what he did.
Well, we need to solve the problem because as more homes go in, the water pressure's going in the other direction.
And I believe Mr. Wolf mentioned to you about a pump at each home. I call it an injector pump.
Most of, the typical construction of a home in Seabreeze is on a slab, no basement. And then you have a, you know, HVAC unit and a closet and a water heater. Where are you putting the pump? Can't put in the attic because it freezes. So, there's no place to put the pump.
It does go into the ground.
It goes into the ground.
Ground, when your line comes in, that's where it goes in. I think, Mr. Parker, am I right, Case?
That's correct.
That is correct, right?
Okay. Well, we need a solution.
Okay. We are working on it.
Thanks, sir.
Thanks, sir.
We'll forward that.
Thank you.
My name is Mike Smith. I'm also at 40 Dunbarry Drive, also at Seabreeze. And I just want to piggyback on something that Nick said, where, you know, you guys are all come to the conclusion that the tax assessor's doing an okay job. Well, I'm gonna differ with that on a personal note just for a moment. I've owned houses in New Jersey before and I'm a 20-year retired veteran Colonel. And I've never had a problem with getting my little $250 veteran discount except in this town. The man has put me through sending forms in till they're coming out the wazoo. And then finally, I sent the last form in thinking this is it and I don't even get a response. So, he's not doing his job and is very disrespectful to me as a 20-year veteran of the U.S. Air Force. That's number one. Number two is to give you a little more credibility of what Nick said. I worked for Toll Brothers for 16 years. I just retired in January. So, I was very privy to the entire Seabreeze thing and how you guys all wanted it. It was very attractive to me, the idea when I retired to move in. So, I moved in about a year ago. And that was originally assessed, when I got all the documentation with the Toll Brothers, they said, "Your taxes, based on your house, should be in the 6K range." By the time I moved in, I'm now at $8,300 for maybe a 2,400 square foot retired home. That's nuts. And there's something wrong because, for example, when I look at, you know, I'm just, you know, I, by the way, I was a purchasing officer for the Air Force and so I really take to heart spending taxpayers' money. But I, you know, I look at how much they, you know, how much money goes into that and it just blows my mind that it would be that kind of money for that sort of thing to go when originally, there's people there that when they moved in were paying around $6,000 and now they're paying $8,000. There's something wrong. And then I look at you, I know you guys very clearly, you, you know, don't have any to do with the school budgets, but there's something wrong with the school budget when the student population goes down and yet the taxes are going up on a per student basis. And I don't know what the town's getting for it. So, that's just my two cents. I know you guys say you don't have any to do with it and we do attend the board meetings and beat our head against the wall and that. But I just want to make it clear, I don't, and then what was really a slap in the face because I was one of those ones that just appealed my taxes, as Nick said, there was 30-something of us or whatever it was. And then I get a piece of paper from where he just gave me my assessment on my postcard and then he reassesses me, I guess, to scare me, intimidate me into trying to maybe pull back my assessment and increase it even higher than what he assessed just a year ago. There's something wrong with that. There's intimidation process going on here. But you guys don't want to look at that, you need to look at it. That's it. I've been in this, I've been a New Jersey resident for many, many years, even when I stationed in McGuire, all these places, and I've owned houses and I sold houses. And I've appealed taxes before. I've never gotten a counter, never, never. There's something wrong. I would really appreciate if you all really look into it seriously. There's something wrong there. And like I said, plus from a personal aspect, just my little $250 veteran discount and I sent like three different documents, including awards, medals, everything else I had in the military that I went back from, you know, so.
As we all indicated, yes, we're working on the tax assessor. So, probably understand.
All right. Well, look, Ron Martin, 44 Dunbarry, Seabreeze. If I knew then what I know now, I think my career would have been a tax assessor. I really do. It's an infallible job. I didn't realize that when they signed their second four-year contract, they had tenure for life. We all get to pay for it. We have no voice in it. You say you have no management control over him. We met with the county tax administrator for tax assessors and she has very limited, or that function, not her, that function has very limited power over him. There appears to be no managerial supervision for him. He's not benefiting, and I'll give him the credit of being a young man, he's not benefiting from any tutor, mentor, or supervisory personnel. He appears to be running just chip shot all over the damn place. And we get to pay for it. And it's a smear on the town and it's a smear on you. He is hired by this community. We have inherited him. But I do not find him to be comparable to anyone that we've met. And we've met a lot of people, we've met most of you privately. In any way, shape, or form, could he shine your shoes? None whatsoever. Members of our community have been before him as individuals and he has been not only discourteous, displayed an attitude of arrogance, he is retaliatory, he's just condescending and totally not the image of a, quote, "public servant." Now, the frustration that we have is not only to our community. We've talked to other people in the community. You know we participate in the school board meetings. We have a member of our committee, my chair of the committee, who is working with the financial group in the school board, the business administrator, working through, getting an understanding of how things are done. We come not as watchdogs. We come not as backbreakers. We're really part of the community. And the money that we spend in the community, we think is well spent. But I have to tell you, it's really beginning to smart on the response that we got from this gentleman. And I use that term loosely. The only recourse we have is to go to the state level and talk to one of the big shots in the Tax Commission at the state level and express our displeasure. We have surveyed most of the 265 plus 55 communities in New Jersey. We are, we were in contact with quite a few of the tax assessors. And to a person, man or a woman, every response we got was courteous and they couldn't do enough to answer our questions. And our question was very simple. What do you value a home at? We explained who we are, what the circumstances were when we bought our home, and the question of the deed. There are many options that he has and he's not exercising. And that is a red form in our side. This evening, there's a meeting in Brookdale College, Jersey tax, property tax reform, and a group called Equestria. We have joined those organizations and we will be meeting with Mr. Sweeney and other people to present our case that we are totally dissatisfied with the President's State of Affairs relative to property tax. We understand the mechanisms, but every time you ask a question about what's the status of this particular bill or that particular bill, the answer is, "It's locked up." So, a lot of them, and we spent a lot of time with Senator DeConner, who's been more than helpful to us, the process is just antiquated. And our objective is to take care of not only ourselves, but the other residents of the state. How many of you have got tax reductions? How many of you have got tax increases? You know, when you look around, what's the parity? What's the fairness? We have a town to support and we recognize that. We have children to educate, we recognize that. But the educational budget is eight points, eight percentage points above the state norm. This little town, 68% of the total town budget is attributed to the school board. Not your problem. You have no, no say in it. That's ridiculous. You're the leaders of the town. There shouldn't be some sort of governance. There shouldn't be a feedback process where that could occur. It doesn't. It's a separate entity and that was legislated. So, those are the things that we all have to live under. But our frustration is extremely high, as you can tell. And the response that we're getting to join the effort on a statewide basis, not only of our type of communities, but all private residents, is extremely high. So, I just want to share that with you so that we can all get an understanding. This is business, business to us. You know, we all care ourselves when we sit around the clubhouse having a glass of wine that we screwed up in a tax assessment. That's a hell of a job to do. But we have that. All of the, we have several meetings with you, Gary, and your staff, Veronica was available. You were available, very cooperative, very sensitive, very, you know, patient with listening to our harangues. But the fact of the matter is we're frustrated. We believe we bring a lot to the community. We bring a lot of experience. We have lots of business experience, we have lots of entrepreneurial experience, teaching experience, police, fire. We have a whole mix of people, very diverse community. And those resources are available to work with the town when and where required. But on the flip side of the coin, there's a little bit of reluctance to do that because we're not getting appreciated. So, I appreciate your listening to my, all right?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Come on up, Regina. Ladies first.
Regina DeSantis of Sunset Drive, Sunrise Beach. First, I'd like to invite the community of Seabreeze to attend the school board meeting. It's been changed to April 25th at 7:30 PM.
We're here.
Instead of April 18. Thank you. I'm also here to let the public know that Monday night, there was a very interesting planning board meeting here in this room. The planning board approved a very dense proposal for 256 condos, 10% of which will be affordable housing units and a quick check at Laurel Boulevard, behind CVS, and across the street. All I can say is I hope to God that the CAFR permit for that development, which is so dense, does not get approved because I cannot understand how the stormwater is supposed to work there with the vernal pond, wetlands, and all the impervious coverage that's gonna go there. Good luck to them.
It's 30% coverage like every other property in town.
The traffic, there's so many factors that's going to make that hardship for the people at Laurel Boulevard. And I've been saying this for many years, that more people need to attend the planning board meeting every second Monday of the month at 7 PM. And all the ratables that this town brought in have done nothing to help our taxes. I told you so many years ago.
Let me just make one comment. With regards to the project that Mr. Chen is talking about, there was 256 units that were approved, you know, 10% of them are gonna be co-units, which is a requirement of municipalities, like every other municipality, to create lower moderate income housing. The 26 units that were, or 256 units that were approved were conforming. We allowed 10 units per acre. And the issue, I think, that you have, as well as some of the other environmentalists that were in the room that night, was the fact that it's condensed into one area. The reason it's condensed into one area, as you certainly well know, is the fact that there is issues with some of the drainage. that there is issues with some of the drainage, when you referred to wetlands, bernal ponds, they're very minimal, minimal parts of that acreage. The folks that were here the other night were complaining, well, you shouldn't be able to utilize that. That still belongs to the owner of the site. I thought that the planning board handled it very well. There was a lot of give and take for the residents that are in that area. They got a lot, pretty much everything they asked for, they were given. As far as the Quick Check gas station goes, you know, we, as a planning board, as a governing body, if somebody wants to do something with their property, we can't dictate them and tell them, "No, you can't do it." That would be like us telling Toll Brothers years ago, "Well, it's zoned residential, but we're not going to let you build residential."
Well, they have to get a CAFR permit.
They have to get a CAFR permit. They've already got a CAFR permit for the site when it was originally started five or six years ago, and the CAFR permit, it could possibly be modified, as it was discussed the other night, or it could be a new application itself. But overall, it's something that's going to create ratables for the township. Your comment, because you were certainly an outspoken advocate of opposing Toll Brothers, you opposed Home Depot, you opposed Walmart, you've pretty much opposed everything that we put in this town. Your comment to say that it has not helped the town...
I never actually spoke against Toll Brothers.
Can I finish?
I remind you...
Your comment saying that, when you take, and I told you the other night, and I told the folks in the audience the other night, go over to the tax office and take those ratables and take the dollars that those ratables are taking and bringing into this community, all those tax dollars. If you take that and hit it up and take the 68%, which the gentleman just said that it all goes to the school, which is you, you get that 68%. Without that 68% of that huge amount of money, where would the schools be? You'd be raising taxes even higher than you are right now. So, it's been a benefit to the town, it's given us tax dollars, it's given us, you know, convenience, and it's given us jobs.
What about the drain on the police department, Gary?
What about what?
The drain on the police department.
Our police department is still operating exactly the same level of 42 officers that we were when those ratables were brought into town. Forty-two officers across the board, and we're holding the line.
Very, very busy, from what I read in the weekly police...
We're very, very busy with the schools, dealing with issues with the schools, you know, the drug problem and all the other things that have been brought up tonight.
I don't see school calls, I see shoplifting calls over and over.
We get shoplifting calls, probably maybe three or four from Walmart on a weekly basis. Walmart has the best security system out of any store in the country. We don't do anything. They call us, they hand us a video, this is what the person did. We bring them in here, we get revenue, which goes into the monthly reports, and it pushes up our revenue source. So, it's not a burden on the...
Very dense, and it remains to be seen if it will be approved by CAFR as is.
I will add also that there's nobody happier in this town when, if they have an infant that needs Tylenol at midnight, there's not a parent in this town that is not happy that Walmart is there. In addition to that, there is nobody in this town that was not happy that we had Home Depot after Superstorm Sandy. So, those two reasons by themselves make, I'm happy we have both Walmart and Home Depot.
And the majority of people in this room were all happy as hell to have Toll Brothers.
That's right.
My name is Wolf Isher, I live in Eagan, I'm in this court, part of the Seabreeze community. I was not planning on saying anything tonight, but we'll talk about the taxes and the fact that I had a $2,000 increase this year. I am concerned because I read some of the information that was put out about the affordable income housing that's going to be built where the community, whatever that thing was, that disaster they finally tore down, there and back, is over 200 affordable housing units going in. Well, that's the information that I read in a report that was in the Lacy Reporter, I think is the name of the paper.
118 units.
118. Even so, 118 units.
10% are low-income. No, that's Walter's job. Walter, sorry.
Yes, it's all for them.
Okay. The thing that I found most upsetting was that it said that they were not to be paying any property taxes, that they would pay 6% of rental income.
To the town.
To the town.
In lieu of property taxes.
Okay. I don't know if that comes anywhere as close to the property taxes we're paying. If it does, it would be like over 8,000 times your 100 and whatever number of units, which would be fine, but my impression is, it's not a fraction of that. And I understand some of the other affordable housing has gotten grandfathered into that deal of only, well, I can only tell you what I read in the Lacy Reporter.
Obviously, they're not telling the truth.
Well, then why didn't you tell us? I mean, if you're going to criticize what the Lacy Reporter reported, then where is the township putting out the information?
We put this, the information is at these public meetings, it's, we, it was meet the mayor at the library.
Are we communicating to the public?
There is.
True. I don't know, whatever means.
These are the meetings, the planning, they're all public meetings.
And it looks like most of the township is here right now, so they're all going to know about it. Be realistic, gentlemen, and ladies.
Somebody's...
Go ahead, Gary. First of all, what the mayor is saying, these are the sources of information that we have, and that's why we have Channel 21 here. We pay the school system to take and run these meetings for us on a regular basis. All of our meetings are televised. Unfortunately, in the media, no matter what you put out there, it's not always 100% clear. I'll give you a perfect example. I got into political life, I guess 18 years ago, when I first ran for the school board. My very first election, they put me down as being five years older than I really am. So, I'm getting Medicare applications in the mail for the last six months, when I'm only going to be turning 60 this year, not 65. So, the media's great at that.
You're a mere child.
But it's difficult, so that's why we try to put out there as much as we can at these public meetings. The project you're talking about would be Walters Homes, which is, it's a pilot program that we've approved in two separate phases. Every municipality in the state of New Jersey has a requirement to build coa units, low-modern income.
And how do you understand that?
Yeah.
Well, my concern is, what is the disparity between taxes, oh, property taxes, and what you will actually be giving?
Yeah.
Because with over 100 units, I'm sure it's going to increase the number of students going to school, which is going to increase the cost.
Yes and no, yeah.
And I don't particularly want to pay for it if they're not paying their fair share.
Yeah.
And that, taken together with the fact that in 2019, you're losing the biggest taxpayer in town, and then, what, $19 million going down to what, maybe $5 million that they'll pay?
Well, we're not losing it.
But what's going to happen in 2019 and 2020? I got hit with a $2,000 increase. Is it going to be another $10,000 increase or more?
Yeah. Let me answer one at a time, but first of all, with regards to power plant, in 2019, it is slated to close at this point in time, so we've been made aware of that, although we haven't gotten final documentation from the NRC that it is actually going to close as a guarantee. Because it's closing doesn't mean that all of a sudden the plug is out and all of a sudden we're going to lose all these tax dollars. We still will continue to get the revenue sources that we've been getting down there, unless the legislature changes that, which is very possible. But at the same time, you know, the plant's just not going to cease existence, the property's still going to be there, the plant's still going to be there, it's still going to be a ratable to us, they won't be generating power.
It's not going to be much of a ratable.
No, that's not true.
That's not true, because the value of the overall plant itself, until they dismantle, is tremendous. That's one of our biggest, it is our biggest ratable in town. Once they dismantle, which realistically, they've told us could take a 20-year period, then we have, you know, going back to the point where there's just a vacant piece of land there, but that's a minimum of 10, probably 20, 25 years going through decommissioning because the fuel has to sit in the pool for 10 years before they can even pull it out, before they can store it. The governing body, over the last two years, has been aggressively going out and trying to find another source to build a gas plant on the site behind that property, and we truly believe we're going to have success in getting that, we truly believe we're going to have success in getting revenue awarded to us for the spent fuel storage that we have stored down there, because when we agreed to, or when whoever was on the governing body agreed to build that plant here 40 years ago, we didn't agree to become a spent fuel storage facility. So, we know, we're working with other municipalities, we know there's a value to that, we know Yucca Mountain was supposed to take and get that, that spent fuel storage, that's been pulled, the plug's been pulled on that by President Obama, we don't know if it's ever going to move forward again.
It wasn't Obama's fault, but it got pulled.
It got pulled. All the money was spent, everything was built, and...
So, don't make it a blame thing.
Well, okay, Nevada got all the money, they spent billions and millions of dollars, and then at the 11th hour, they decide we don't want the spent fuel storage, so Lacy Township residents have it. We feel we're entitled to get reimbursement for that, just as other municipalities throughout the state. So, we're fighting that fight, and we're going to continue to fight that fight, because our job is to make sure that there's revenue sources coming in to take and offset the taxes. As far as Walters Project goes, it's a pilot program. Pilot programs are set up so that we can provide the low-modern income housing that coa requires of us. Our requirement is well over 1,000 units, we've got a tremendous amount of units to provide. We've got 82 square miles out west of the parkway, which is completely unbuildable, so that's not going to be developed. We're about 95% built out on our land throughout the township, so we've got 5% left over to try and find ways to build this stuff. We've kind of kicked the can down the road for many, many years, you know, because we didn't really have a developer or way to develop these things. Over the last couple of years, we've started addressing it. Walters Homes has built other sites down by Costco, down in Barnegat, they build a great project. What happens is, we get the money that we would normally get in taxes to the municipality. The school taxes, the school does not get taxes on it at all. It's a pilot program, so the school does not get taxes. It's locked in for 30 years, at the end of 30 years, it becomes a regular tax ratable on the tax rolls, and it flips over into full-time taxes.
So, who pays the school taxes that they're not paying?
Well, the school taxes are still going to be spread out amongst the community, but when you say...
Well, yeah, but not to them. They're the ones that are quoting the increase in costs.
No, no, you're saying, well, the kid, all these additional kids that are going to go into the school, well, the demographics show that the minimal, that schools, a minimal amount of school children coming into these pilot programs. They monitor these things through the state, one, two, three bedrooms, you have to be very specific how many people you have in each unit, it's monitored every single month, Walters Homes keeps on top of it, the state keeps on top of it. The school enrollment has gone down, what did we say, 700 or 800 students over the last 10 years, but yet the staffing has not. So, the schools have the available space, they have staffing available, so, you know, if there's a question of, matter of fact, at the meeting the other night, it's...
That should be savings to the rest of us.
That's, again, that's not our argument, that's what we have to discuss with them, but...
You know, it's a great game. You're not responsible for this, they're not responsible for this, so, but we're the ones who get stuck.
No doubt about it.
It's costing us thousands of dollars a year.
If you go back...
You can't seem to understand that.
We understand it very well. If you go back to 2010 or '11, when the governor made changes, our ability to take and have any involvement in the schools changed at that point in time. If the schools changed their date when they have their elections and their budget to go and coincide with the general election in November, the voting public no longer has the ability to vote on the budget.
I know, we tried to get them to change, and...
Okay? That's the thing, that's where we lost the ability to have any involvement, and Mr. Chen will tell you, very, very much as everyone else will tell you throughout town, that's where things got kind of on the wrong track. We don't have the ability, we do everything we can to work together as two entities, but at the end of the day, they run theirs, we run ours. And the ratables that we're talking about back here, if we don't do them, we could be opened up to a tremendous builder's lawsuit, where the density Mr. Chen is talking about will be minute compared to what they could shove down our...
In addition to, just so to be clear, on the vast majority of residents in this town did not want low-income housing. We were mandated by the state to provide low-income housing, and in addition to that, we have no control over how that developer was able to secure funds to build that site, which is why they were, they are able to do a pilot program as opposed to paying property taxes.
But, it's still, somebody had to negotiate the deal for the 6% of rental income. Who negotiated that?
The state, the state.
State of New Jersey.
State of New Jersey.
Except by the state.
As nothing, we, all we were able to provide, and in addition to that, we collect, for years, we've, since they started the Council of Affordable Housing, the township has collected developers' fees in the amount of, every time a new project was built, we would collect money to go towards affordable housing, and the state threatened to take that money away if we weren't going to use it. So, our hands were tied. We were going to either lose the money that we collected over the years from Walmart and Home Depot and other developers in town, or build out, or find a developer to build out the low-income housing. Our hands were tied. We did the best we could, we got the best deal we could, giving all the parameters.